Okay, take two. Welcome, everybody, to the First Board of Trustees of the Village Board of Village of Woodbury, meeting of 2021 in the mid-year reorg. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't have a flag behind me, but we'll just simulate one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks, folks. Okay, so, right off the bat, we're going to get the oath of office administered to Trustees Gomez and Trustees Jacomazza. So, first of all, congratulations to Andrew and Jesus on their reelection to the Board of Trustees. Desiree, can you please administer the oath of office?
I sure can. Um, part two for you guys, right? So just raise your hand and then make sure you stop in one day this week to sign the book, uh, next week to sign the book. And repeat after me, I state your name.
I think that was.
I knew one of you was gonna say that. Do solemnly swear.
Me or Jesus, come on now.
I. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Uphold the laws of the United States of America.
Uphold the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the state of New York.
And the laws of the state of New York.
While holding the position of.
While holding the position of.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Okay, so, before we move to the mid-year reorg, we'll go to public comment and agenda items only. So there's only a few people in the public here tonight, so thank you for making our jobs easier. Uh, why don't we start with Robin?
No, thank you, just listening tonight.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Neil, is he with you, or?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Samantha? Mr. Gerber?
No, thank you.
Anybody whose name I did not call? I don't see anybody else there. I don't think I missed anybody. Okay, very good. Let's move right into the mid-year reorg. Uh, so to start, I'm appointing Andrew Jacomazza as deputy mayor. So thank you, Andrew, for stepping up here again. Uh, let's move into board liaisons and appointed positions. Can I please have a motion in a second to establish the following liaisons of the village board? Liaison to the town board, Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomazza. Liaison to the planning board, trustee Graziano and trustee Gomez. Liaison to the zoning board, trustee Jacomazza and trustee Derek. Liaison to the fire department, Mayor Egan and trustee Gomez. Liaison to water and sewer department, Mayor Egan and trustee Graziano. Liaison to the building department, Mayor Egan and trustee Derek. Liaison to the highway department, Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomazza. Employee liaisons are Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomazza. And insurance liaisons are trustee Derek and trustee Gomez. So I'm looking for a motion in a second, please. Trustee Jacomazza with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? You, Chris? Okay, uh, looking for a motion in a second to appoint the following individuals to the following positions. Appeals officer for foils, Timothy Egan. Village clerk, treasurer, registrar, Desiree Potvin. And procurement officer, Tim.
Motion.
Thank you, trustee Derek with the motion, trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Looking for a motion in a second to designate Richard Golden with the law firm, Bert Neely, Golden and Norton as attorney for the village.
Make the motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second.
Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye. Meeting dates and public comment procedures. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt the meeting procedures as listed.
Make the motion.
Trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye, thank you. Looking for a motion in a second to adopt the procedures as listed to be followed during the public comments segment of our meetings. Trustee Derek with the motion. Trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion in a second to adopt the procurement policy as listed.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Jacomazza had his hand up first, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye, thank you. Okay, official undertaking. I need a motion in a second to approve the listed form of the official undertaking of municipal officers of village pursuant to section 11 of Public Officers' Law and the manner of execution and the sufficiency of the village's insurance company insured. This undertaking will be administered to all elected officials upon the start of their elected term that handle funds on behalf of the village of Woodbury. Trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye. Need a motion in a second to accept, oh, I'm sorry. So that, that completes the, um, mid-year reorg. Does that, did I miss anything? Very good. Okay, so let's move on to administrative business. Need a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held December 22nd, 25th.
Make the motion.
Trustee Derek with the motion, trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye. Approval of abstract, looking for a motion in a second to approve abstract number 15 containing vouchers 201117, 201290, totally $246,178 and 0.06. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacomazza with the second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye, thank you. Okay, um, we for, excuse me, looking for a motion in a second to approve the following modifications to the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. Des, can, do we need to read out all of those modifications?
Uh, you don't normally do that. You just say per the memo that I submitted, but it's up to you.
The memo that's been submitted. It'll save us about 20 minutes. Okay, trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote Aye, excellent. Moving along to old business. So we're gonna have a discussion and hopefully a vote on introductory local law 12, Architectural Review Board Guidelines. So since the last meeting, additional comments on introductory local law 12 have been received. The county's GML review was received on December 29th, and they stated the Department of Planning had found no evidence that significant, significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval, and they have no further advisory comments. Building Inspector Thomasberger, though, has submitted several comments in a memo dated December 30th, 2020. We're gonna go through these one by one, and the ones that we need to discuss and make a decision on will do at that time when we launch the next comment. So, uh, starting with number one, he feels that the law should also reference commercial properties, turning Norton has already made that change in section 8-4. Number two, he does not know why the board limited this to subdivisions that existed on or after 1990, and he'd like to know what, uh, he'd like to know what would be required for single lots and subdivisions prior to 1990. He noted in quotes, "More than likely, they would still need ARB review in accordance with Ridge Preservation, as approximately 60% of Woodbury is over the 600-foot elevation and within a required view party." Attorney Norton noted on her, noted her office chose 1990 as a suggestion, and the purpose was to exempt all developed neighborhoods which were developed under very different circumstances. So we need to decide if we want to include all lots or leave this section as written by attorney Norton. So does anybody have any thoughts on this?
Um, and finally, you guys is.
Yeah, I agree with Chris. Personally, I think we should accept attorney Norton's written comments and follow with it that way. Anybody else? Tara, who, this is, everybody's nodding yes, all right. So Kelly, you got that? Okay, good, very good. Number three, he asked if solar panels installed on an existing home be included in ARB review as an exterior alteration. Attorney Norton stated in response, this would be for the building inspector's interpretation, and if he's unsure, then there's an ambiguity. Kelly suggested in her memo, uh, that we either specifically include or exclude solar goods. So we need to make that decision.
And note that if you do make that change, it would be substantive, so you would need another seven days on your desk.
I think any or if not all, many if not all of these changes would be substantive, and you'd have to wait again, right?
Yeah, if, if you make additional changes, if I already incorporated them, you've had them.
Right. So, anybody have any thoughts, one way or another?
Again, I think it's fine the way it is. I don't think we need to change it.
Okay. Okay, good, Kelly. Number four, uh, he feels that the law as written would cause a dramatic increase in planning board applications and places a huge burden on the planning board members, consultants, and building department staff. Uh, Gary suggested that the planning board dedicate an additional meeting as necessary specifically for ARB Ridge Preservation applications that will not require any additional planning board approvals. Attorney Norton's response was that it would be up to the chairman to decide whether or not they'd have any extra meetings for the planning board that's outside our burden.
Exactly. I agree.
Number five, he feels the law should have a section with specific guidelines included prohibitive materials. This would make it easier for the applicant in the planning board to conduct a review to eliminate the submission applica, applicants, excuse me, applications that do not conform to accepted standards. Attorney Norton stated that we would need to decide, uh, making note that it's usually a longer process involving an architect studying and recommended guidelines. So again, leave it as is or make the change.
And it's always, it's also something that you can think, you know, down the line, if you want to put together these guidelines, they don't necessarily have to be included in here.
No, I think the planning boards, and, and I think the architectural review board is the board that's gonna review the architecture. I don't think we need to start putting up prohibited items going into the, looking at what we're doing.
I have no argument with that. Andrew's good.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll leave that as is. Number six, Gary feels section 314-7A2 should require 12 copies to be required to include copies for referral to the county if required, and attorney Norton agreed with that.
Change was made.
Yes. Gary feels the applicat, number seven, Gary feels the application should have a set fee and suggests the fee be established for subdivisions, additions, individual lots, and commercial applications. He feels the fee would serve two purposes. One, to remove the requirement of an Espro account to be managed by the building department staff, and two, the applicant would be aware of the costs at the time of the application, and not all, but some of these application types have exceeded $10,000 in consultant fees for a new single-family dwelling. Attorney Norton said we would need to decide if this is something we want to do, but thought it would be unlikely the board would want residents to take up the burden of the extra costs of consultants. I don't disagree with that at all. Uh, Kelly noted the expensive applicant, the expensive applications are because applicants are trying to do things contrary to the code, so that would be borne by their consultants, not ours.
I think we could take a look at our fees and schedule if we wanted to do that in a separate kind of thing.
Sorry, you know, little, little law on audio, look, look at our watch, Chris?
So we could probably take a look at our fees and for everything as a separate item and kind of come up with a new fee schedule if we so choose. I don't think we need to put that into this piece of legislation.
I agree with you, Chris. Uh, we, we started to talk about that a little less than a year ago, and we held off because of the pandemic, but it's definitely something we should revisit, especially with the coming up in the new budget cycle. So I agree. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. So, uh, based on the discussion that we just had, there are no substantive changes, so we can proceed forward with the vote tonight, correct, Kelly? Anybody have any final thoughts on this? All right. So, with that said, uh, we don't need to do anything else other than vote on it. We've already done secret.
Yeah, everything's done.
You completed secret, you held your public hearing, you've gotten comments from the planning board which are incorporated, and you got comments from the planning department and local determinations, so you're all set to vote.
GMO on Gary, yeah, okay, good. So then I'm looking for a motion in the second, uh, to approve introductory local law number 12, Architectural Review Board, for Architectural Review Board Guidelines.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, trustee Jacomazza with the motion, trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion?
Put it to bed.
What was that, Chris?
Put it to bed.
Put it to bed, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stick a fork in it. Okay, good. You lost.
Jesus.
I gotta do a, I gotta do a roll call, cuz it's a local law. Did we say we lost Jesus, cuz I?
Yeah, we just lost him.
So should I wait a second?
You're ready.
You can, yeah.
Or talk real slow.
Call it real slow.
All right, it's time back in now, so do the roll call and just speak slowly.
Well, he's number two. Egan. Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Is he on yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
What are we talking about? What are we talking about?
We're probably not local.
Been voting. Trustee Jacomazza?
Yes.
We'll have to be slow anymore.
Oh, he's in.
What are we holding on?
Local law number 12, ARB.
ARB.
Yes.
Trustee Graziano?
Yes, let's move this one along.
You want me to talk faster?
Yes, now we can talk faster, man. The square disappears, go back to slow.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so local law number 12, uh, 13, Ridge Preservation. So again, since the last meeting, additional comments have been received. Uh, the county's GML review was received on December 29th along with number 12, and they stated that the Department of Planning had found no evidence that significant municipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval, and they have no further advisory comments. Uh, building inspector Gary Thomasberger did also submit comments on this in a memo dated December 30th as well. Uh, there's only a few comments on this one. So number one, he feels that the law will pace, place an additional burden on the planning board and suggests that a separate meeting date specifically for the applications that would not otherwise require additional planning board approval, uh, which is the same comment, uh, number three, for introductory local law number 12 above that we just voted on. Um, so, uh, Kelly, uh, Kelly's comments were the same as for the other law, so we don't really need to take any further action on that. Number two, he feels visible from a view card that should be further defined, should be defined further in section 310-2 by adding all proposed structures. And attorney Norton stated she doesn't feel this is necessary as it may exclude visible structures that do not precisely fit the definition.
Great, I agree.
Good. Gary feels guidelines should be set up similar to ARB, and attorney Norton states she feels the guidelines in 310-13C are sufficient. Gary feels there should also be a fee schedule similar to ARB, and there should be categories such as additions, new homes, residential subdividing lots, commercial filing, clearing, et cetera. Attorney Norton stated a different schedule of fees tied to different types of applications is fine, but it would be up to us to decide, and I go back to the aforementioned comments that Chris made with regard to modifying the fee schedule later on in the, uh, in the year and the next month or two. Agree?
Agree.
Okay, so there are no further comments from Gary on that, so we can vote on that one, too. Uh, so, we did everything else like we did the local law number 12, so I'm looking for a motion in a second, and I'm looking around to make sure whoever's here this time, okay? Looking for a motion in a second. Chris, you have a question?
I'll make the motion, no, I was saying.
Okay. Chris is making the motion to pass the law. Trustee Gomez, just put his hand up for a second.
Oh.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
How about I, Des, roll call?
Mayor Egan?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Jacomazza?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Graziano?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, new business. Have a couple of things. So we need to have a discussion and possible, hopefully, a vote on potential bonding for needs in, in this fiscal year or this calendar year. So there's several projects upcoming that the board needs to bond for in order to pay for. The first priority is to work at the Andor Park Water Number Six system, which is, which are, include water system filter replacements, treatment plant upgrades, and water supply enhancements. The work is estimated to cost the residents solely in that water improvement area $500,000. In preparation for this work, an engineer's report was prepared in November 2020 addressing all the requirements under SECPRA. There's a number of operational difficulties in the Andor water supply system due to facilities and disrepair. The well supply capacity needs enhancements, and the filtration system is no longer effectively treating the water supply for removal of manganese. The improvements that will be done include fracking of one of the existing wells, relocation of iron manganese, manganese filters that are unused at the Highland Lake Estates Treatment Plant for reuse at Andor Park, and developing a new well supply for redundancy and reliability. Upon securing funding, the fracking infiltration system will be done immediately. The new well supply will be developed after permanent approvals with the New York State PEC and Department of Health is secure. The first action that needs to be done by us is adopting a SECPRA resolution, assuming lead agency status, typing the action, and adopting a negative declaration. So, I'm looking for a motion in the second to adopt the written resolution, assuming lead agency status, typing the action, and adopting a negative declaration under SECPRA for the Andor Park Water System Filter Replacement, Treatment Plant Upgrades, and Water Enhancement Project. Now I'm gonna drop down to the, uh, therefore be a resolved area. That a take on, okay, good. So now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodbury hereby, one, assumes the agency status with respect to the view of the proposed Andor Park Project Expansion under SECPRA in Part 617 of its implementing regulations. Number two, classifies the action as an unlimited action. And number three, makes a determination of significance of a negative declaration that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and adopts the annexed negative declaration. Okay, trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? Or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So now with that done, uh, can I please have a motion in a second to adopt the written bond resolution authorizing the construction improvements to the Andor Park Water System, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof of $500,000, appropriate set amount for such purpose, and authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount of $500,000 to finance said appropriation.
Don't make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? How about I? Do we need to roll call that? Do we need a?
You can, if you want to, I don't, I don't know.
If we do, we don't, we don't need to.
There's not a requirement for you to do so, it's up to you.
Next item, introductory local law number one of 2021, heavy duty towing. Board of Trustees finds that it is reasonable and appropriate to update and amend chapter 283 of the Village Code entitled Towing to provide regulations for heavy-duty towing. This proposed law is determined to be an exercise of the police powers of the village to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. Uh, Kelly, before I ask for any motions on this, you want to provide just a little background for the public so they understand what we're doing?
Sure, this local law really separates a regular tow of a car versus something that is considered a heavy-duty, like a tow truck, and those often happen, you know, on the throughway and in areas that the, the police monitor. So this kind of separates that so that the costs are there, the procedures are there, and so that the police don't have to also, you know, they go through the call list, and they're required to go through one, two, three, four. This separates the call list so that they can get somebody there faster as well.
Okay. Questions from any of the board members before we move forward? Okay, thank you. So, uh, first, I'm looking for a motion in the second to introduce local law number one of 2021 entitled towing to establish regulations for heavy-duty towing.
I'll make the motion.
Derek with the motion. Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? How about I? Sue. Looking for a motion in the second to refer introductory local law, uh, number one of 2021 to the Woodbury Police Department for very new impact. Trustee Derek with the motion, trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote Aye. Okay, now looking for a motion in the second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 PM on January 28th, 2021, in our next meeting to entertain public comments on introductory local law number one of 2021. Trustee Gomez with the motion, trustee Jacomazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I vote Aye. Yep. Next item, uh, donation Woodbury Common for new Troutbrook well. Pursuant to section 1.3 of the developers' agreement with the Woodbury Common in June of 2013, they posted a $250,000 escrow with the village that was to be used for public improvements specifically to financially contribute towards the cost of signal retiming or adaptive signal coordination of the traffic lights on Route 32 to help improve traffic flow. If the money does not get used for this purpose, then funds are donated to the village for its use to assist the DOT in such endeavors or otherwise improve traffic flow in that area, or to generally use for the general health, safety, and public welfare of the village in a manner related in some respect to their renovation project. So with that said, several months ago, I reached out to representatives of Woodbury Common to discuss using the funds to help offset the costs for the Troutbrook well supply improvements. Uh, they've agreed to support this project and have provided a written letter to that effect to help the village maintain public water quality standards and meet future water demand, and to release that $250,000 bond to the village for this purpose. So that's huge for us. So I'm looking for a motion in the second to accept the donation from the Woodbury Common of $251,928.82, which is the $250,000 principal plus interest earned for the Troutbrook Well Water Supply Improvements Project by closing performance escrow P523.
Make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about I? Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the following modifications to the fiscal year 2020 slash 2021 budget of the consolidated water fund, recognizing the donation and allocating an expense line item by increasing FC 2705, which is gifts and donations, by $251,928.82, and increasing FC 8310.472 Troutbrook Well by $251,928.82. Trustee guys, uh, excuse me, trustee Jacomazza with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about I? Okay, that concludes regular business, which went very smoothly. Thank you, everybody. So let's move on to public comment. Uh, let's start with, uh, Mr. Gerber. I'm just going in the order of the names that I see.
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Robin and or Neil?
No, thank you.
Okay. And I don't think there's anyone else. I think Sandy, or excuse me, Samantha dropped off. I don't see anybody else from the public. Is there anybody else from the public that I didn't recognize? Okay. Let's move on to board member and department head comment. I don't have much prepared for tonight. Uh, just want to say again, congratulations to Andrew and Jesus on their reelection, and look forward to additional years of service from you guys. Doing a great job so far. Uh, with regard to COVID, uh, things are getting, uh, very interesting out there. Uh, I can tell you that our 911 volume throughout the counties in general in the Hudson Valley is dramatically increasing again. Uh, this particular strain or strains seems to be significantly more virulent than the previous strain, and, uh, people are really getting it a lot faster, although the symptoms don't seem to be as bad. But let's talk about vaccines for a minute. Um, vaccines came out strong and fast with 1A, but then seemed to peter out in terms of availability. Personally, I don't know what the problem is. I've been asking a lot of questions on this, and nobody really seems to know the answer. I don't think it's a manufacturing problem, I don't even think it's a distribution problem. I think it's a, uh, well, I think it is a distribution problem from the federal government to the states, but that's just my opinion. I really don't know. Uh, but I can tell you that we're looking to, as a community, to get vaccines in the hands of as many people that wants them as quickly as possible. Uh, I've already had my first dose, I have my second dose coming from Monday, and I'm looking forward to a lot more people getting the vaccine, especially those that want. Uh, I don't have anything else, so let's move on to the board. Trustee Graziano?
All right, thank you all for coming today. As we all digest and shake our heads at the recent events, something of an epiphany came to me. This has been coming for a long while now, and is more widespread than we can imagine. We have gone through a year-long global pandemic, and you would have thought that this would have brought people closer together, but sadly it hasn't. As I watched and listened to the news, read social media posts, et cetera, I have been literally disgusted by what I have seen. People spewing hate, people writing and destroying things in the past six months, and the absolutely asinine display last week in Washington. It was truly sad and depressing to watch unfold. While watching on all this unfold, I began to reflect.
When did people become so entitled? Just because you want or demand something does not mean you are automatically entitled to get it. Have we raised a generation of those who have never been told no? Do we worship the wealthy and famous so much that we fail to see their shortcomings? People have seemingly lost the ability to compromise or even see another's point of view. Everyone is always a hundred percent right, and everyone else is always a hundred percent wrong. And that in of itself is the inherent problem. And this is happening all over our great country, in every state, county, town, and village. Just as a small example, over the past week, I have witnessed many posts on social media veritably calling out people for getting the vaccine, telling others how they don't deserve it, and railing on about how they've been cheated out of their supposed right to be first in line. In the face of this pandemic, I ask everyone, is this the way we wish to survive as a people? Are we going to climb over each other to be first, regardless of the consequences to our humanity? Far too many have reverted to the basic instincts and only consider me and I. The entire meaning of community is being lost, bit by piece by piece, as are the age-old concepts of we and us. If we generally want changes of people, then we must be willing to meet each other halfway. We are doomed to fail, ensuring myopic one points of view is the only one that survives as our main goal. This country was founded on the cultures and viewpoints of many races, religions, colors, and creeds, and we are forsaking all that diversity in exchange for total annihilation of anyone who thinks differently from us. This needs to end, and only we as a people can do it. It's going to take a grassroots effort, person by person, community by community, but we need to start now, and we need to start together. It is time to stop being selfish, stop being entitled, and honestly, start thinking of others, especially we, we all need to relearn how to be tolerant of other points of view. The value of humanity is not defined whether you're far left or far right, but defined in how we can meet in the middle. It matters not if you're a Democrat, Republican, Independent, Libertarian, et cetera. We have all lost when the messenger of hate, the other, when the messenger of hate the other side at all costs becomes the dogma, instead of how we can work together as one people to better ourselves as a collective. Unfortunately, politics on all levels has become a sleazy and inherent selfish endeavor, instead of public service it was intended to be. We need to take a step back, take a step, take a breath, and work towards our common goals, or we are doomed as a society. Pontificating to people what you do for them is ineffective. Showing people what you can do with them is so much more valuable. If all one can say is I or me, then they're not looking to serve the public, they're looking for the public to serve them. Take a closer look at action rather than words, break the cycle of entitlement, and start being good once again to your fellow human beings. We have had enough tragedy in the past twelve months to last us all a lifetime. It is long past time we move together and move forward. So be well, be safe, and please take some time to reflect on how you wish to be remembered once your time is done on this earth. We are at a crossroads, and how we choose to proceed will define us for a lifetime. Thank you and good night.
Very nice, Chris, thank you. Trustee Gomez?
You say Gomez?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no, I just didn't, because my phone, I'm on my phone, so I came here as well.
Okay, I want to say thank you to all who came out tonight. And a big thank you to all who voted for Andrew and I to be reelected to our second term as your village trustees. I really, it really means a lot to us that our Woodbury community believed in our similar goals for a better, beautiful, and united Woodbury. Thank you again for voting us back into office so we can continue our goal of having one Woodbury. Moving forward, Andrew and I will keep trying to achieve all the promises we made to our constituents to better our Woodbury community. Thank you all again. Have a great night, and please stay safe.
Thank you, Jesus. Trustee Derek.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Hope everybody had a safe, relaxing, and enjoyable holiday with their families. This year, I hope this board is even more productive than we were last. The village created three new committees in twenty twenty that will continue working through this year with several goals in mind. We're going to continue with our code changes to address areas where we think there is room for improvement. Working with the land preservation committee, we have been focusing on identifying areas for potential preservation, and also discussing different environmental protections we as a village can consider. The hope is that at some point during this fiscal year, we will be in a position to act on many of the ideas that have been thoroughly discussed by many of, on the committees. With a kickoff in twenty twenty one of the village's revitalization committee, this is where I hope we see a lot of new ideas, exciting changes, and more outside of the box thinking to help enhance and sustain life here in Woodbury. Just as a reminder, letters of interest for this committee have been, have to be received by our village clerk Desiree by tomorrow at the end of business. So please, if you have not yet submitted a letter and you are interested, please do so by tomorrow. I'm excited to serve this community's upcoming year and look forward to working hard to make a positive difference in everyone's quality of life. I hope everyone remains safe and everyone be well. Thank you, good night.
And so, trustee Jacomaza? You're muted, Andrew.
Yeah, I got it. January twenty twenty one held so much promise, held so much hope. Last week's storming of the Capitol, coupled with this past summer's violence throughout many major cities, continue to highlight the growing unrest, the growing divide that exists in this country. Next week, we'll be honoring and celebrating the life of one of the great Americans, Montliffe King. King's well-documented commitment to nine nonviolent social change remains one of his most important legacies. Yet this portrait of the man is woefully incomplete without a discussion of his political thought and process, which was kind of considered revolutionary at the time. King urged civil rights activists, law enforcement personnel, and all Americans to practice nonviolence peaceful protests. Unfortunately, that is not what is occurring throughout this country. And both sides of the table are to blame. My biggest concern in this next generation is, my biggest concern is the next generation of political leaders. Where will they take this country? Will they work to heal or continue to make the mistakes that have plagued this country over the last decade? Or are we just doomed to repeat those mistakes? Only time will tell. In the meantime, in an attempt to introduce the next generation to the political process, I have a meeting scheduled for next week with the Monroe Woodbury School District and leaders of the Monroe Woodbury School District to begin the process of forming a junior village government. Certainly, the youth of today are very aware of what is right and just, but they not, may not be aware of how local government actually works. What our children see today is adults that have forgotten how to just have a conversation. We have forgotten how to accept our differences and appreciate those differences. Hopefully, my hope is, is that with this formation, maybe we can make a difference in these youngsters' lives and point them in the right direction and accept who we are for what we are. And I will keep everybody posted with that. I have one more random thought. I would like to just welcome Woodbury's newest eatery, Viva Mexican Deli and Grocery. According to my running mate, Jesus Gomez, it's the real deal. So I want to welcome them to Woodbury, and I want to thank them for taking a chance on our area during a very difficult time to be even attempting opening a business. So I thank Alfredo and his family. While we welcome new people to our area, I also want to just note the passing of two longtime residents in Terry Myers and Vincent Hammond. I just ask everybody to keep their, their families in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Andrew. Go to the department heads. Rob, you have anything? Okay, Mickey, you have anything? I'll take that as a no. Kelly? Alright, Desiree? Final word? Nothing? Wow, okay. I miss any department heads. I don't see anybody else today. Very good. With no further business stand to discuss or comments received, can I please have a motion in a second to adjourn?
The motion?
Trustee Gomez with the motion, trustee Derek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? How about I? Thank you, everybody, and good night.